All right, we have the public open for me. Manchester County Board of Education, may I have a vote, please?
Mr. Staples.
Here.
Ms. Mount.
Here.
Mr. Webster.
Here.
Mrs. Sermon.
Here.
Ms. Peas. Ms. Wingler. Mr. Scardine. And Mr. P. Here. I have a notice that's published on Friday, August 13th, 2021. The United Partners, the Manchester County Board of Education, and the Manchester County Board of Education is meeting. The statement to this effect shall be entered into the minutes of this meeting. Whereas Section 8 of the Oklahoma Act permits the exclusion of the public from the meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body has the opinion such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be resolved by the Manchester County Board of Education as follows. The publisher shall be excluded from discussion here after specified subject matters. The general nature of the subject matters to be discussed is legal personnel negotiations. To anticipate these matters will be made public within six days. This reservation shall be unaffected immediately. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
All right, so. All American.
We'll be back around six seconds. Like a regular meeting that November 20th, November meeting of 2021 to the Manchester County Board of Education. May I have a vote, please?
Mr. Staples.
Here.
Ms. Mount.
Here.
Mr. Webster.
Here.
Mrs. Sermon.
Here.
Mr. P.
Here.
Oh, that's me. Ms. Wingler.
Here.
Mrs. Scardine.
Here.
Mr. P.
Here. Uh, thank you for joining the flags, ladies and gentlemen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every name just as small.
Uh, thank you all for coming out tonight. I have a very, very, very short message tonight. Uh, school seems to be progressing well. It can be cooler weather, but at least it's a change of clocks. If that is dark in the morning, the kids drop the mustache, but that helps a little bit. Fall sports are probably included in our leave, right? Adams here. Drybrow fall sports are done. Hearing on for winter sports, so we can look forward to that. And away we go. All right, just drive it.
Okay, before I give my report, uh, we, we know that the students are more important than the student. Anyway, right? So Nicole, and then let them just give you a little, uh, the rest of the board. Introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself and tell us what you got.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Nicole Collinson and I'm the treasurer of the junior class. Uh, this is Will Freeman. He's the president of the junior class at the high school. We are here on behalf of the MTHX Student Government Association, and this month has been very eventful. The freshman class is planning a fundraiser where they sell pretzels at the school to the athletes or any staff or students that may be at the school. Uh, they are also planning a sweetheart dance in February before Valentine's Day for the halls. Uh, the sophomore class recently ran a prom cake fundraiser where they rose over $300, which is very impressive and.
A lot of prom cake.
Uh, the junior, the power cuff is on Friday, the power cuff game, and the junior class will receive the money from the concession that will be sold at the game. We recently also put down our prom deposit at Versailles, which is really exciting. So we could have a prom this year. Um, we are planning to have our prom on May 13th, and we hope the tickets can be as low as $45. As our fundraiser this year, we're selling winter gear, which are babies and blankets. Um, and you'll take over for this.
Last season, senior class is currently selling tickets for the power cuff game at lunch for a $3 pre-sale uh, during the spring. There you go, get your tickets uh, very early. And they also made $500 with the Buffalo lot of fundraising. And they also set their deposit for their proms. So we're gonna have juniors. And the executive SGA is working on a Hawk Jeopardy night, and they're thinking of hosting it on December 17th. Everyone's still waiting for a pep rally because uh, I think the PA system went out last time. Where do you do that, maybe that's what we, what we could do. We still hope to have one on the 13th of December. And we look forward to all these events that we're running. We really appreciate everybody's support and uh, everybody's help with all of these things. And this pretty much concludes our report on behalf of the Manchester County Board of Education. Uh, we'd like to thank the Board of Ed for providing us the opportunity to be in front of all you tonight. And as well as Mr. Adams, Mr. Liston, Mr. Tifo, Mr. Ramondo, and all the support from our school.
Thank you. Thank you.
And it is debated, being debated in Trent right now. I think it's at the senate level to have a high school student from our high school be appointed as a member of the Board of Education in each township. Uh, they would not be allowed to go to closed session, not only have to have a vote, but to sit with the board and bring issues from the school to the board on a regular basis that the same student is permanent. So we'll look forward and see if that gets to the governor if he kind of get off or whatever that may be coming in here in the future. So that would be kind of cool.
You guys trying to run for that?
Maybe more than one of them.
Yes. And we're lucky to have one more because if you get any kids on that sleeve. Congratulations and thank you so much. All right, we, this week uh, is American Education Week. And every uh, November at this time, we, we kind of recognize our staff. And really uh, it's, and I've said this before, but this district is like, is like a town. It has so many different things involved with it. Uh, most people obviously think of the teachers in the class and right itself. Cause that's kind of a big reason why we're here. Uh, but obviously there's transportation issues. We've got to get them in and forth and in and back. And obviously uh, 180 days back and forth, not including uh, trips and athletic events and so forth. Our bus drivers, our transportation, they do, they do a great job. Our buildings and grounds, which is responsible for all the things on the outside and all the things the inside making that work. Uh, we've done a lot of things where we brought things back into the district and we have our own employees uh, working in the district. And they have that pride, that Manchester pride. So they take care and they do a great job because it's their own facilities that they're working on. Uh, obviously we have the teachers, we have uh, and obviously support staff, our paraprofessionals. Uh, they do a great job in supporting the teachers and in working with students, which obviously they're indispensable in what we do. Uh, we talk about healthcare where we have nurses. We have mental health here where we have child study team. We have guidance council. Uh, and uh, and many others, obviously, and I'd be in trouble because we're broadcasting this, but our technology team does such a great job, uh, Mr. Roush and so forth. And obviously the secretarial staff, which uh, obviously runs most of the schools. They know where things are, uh, they're answering the phone, they're the first line that the parents meet in addition to the transportation. So uh, we, we break it down now that the, the associations have kind of combined. Uh, but obviously there's, there's a lot going on. In many cases, we do more than a town. And of course, our administrators uh, do a great job as, as far as administering schools and, and even building and so forth. And we're not only one town, but we also have obviously regional day, which also branches into Jax. Uh, they do a great job as far as they, and they certainly deserve the recognition. So, or me? Yeah, Lake Hurst who does our nine to 12th and, and obviously their, their staff there. And we, and again, we don't, they're not part of our staff, but they're very important for uh, the buildings and all the services as well. So again, and always at the very end because otherwise that is the person that tries to make me look good. This is beside us, the PR, and then that's certainly a full-time job trying to make me look good. But thank you for all you do. Uh, and it's again, it's important that uh, all these things are so important that if there's one link that's, that gets broken, again, the chain is only as strong with the risk as well. Thank you. Again, we have a great staff here and a staff that's committed to the district. And we did interview one person, I do have to, and I love sharing this. I interviewed one person who eventually got the position and they said, the reason why we, we wanted to come to Manchester is because I see very little turnaround. People who get hired here stay here. And that's, that's a tribute to what we do professionally as far as professional development, but also taking pride in your school. And that I can't replace it. And uh, again, I've been very fortunate to have over like 15th year to have just a, an outstanding staff that not only do the work in, but they also involve in the community. And you'll see as we start talking a little bit about hungry, hungry hand, uh, hungry hands and also Kevin's kids, we're all, so much of our staff is involved. And obviously that's, that's, it's something attributed to this community, but also our staff. So, but without further ado, I'm going to introduce uh, the Manchester Township Education Association with 593 members. You have 335 teachers and ed professionals, 128 paraprofessionals, 63 transportation and personnel, and again, I almost forgot the mechanic to keep, uh, keep the buses going. Uh, 60 custodial rounds of maintenance and 27 secretaries. So uh, if Mr. Staples would come up, please, and accept this on behalf of the MPBA Manchester County Board of Education. That's right, my last call, that's true. Thank you. Good staff because I think they'll probably take a picture of all three.
Yeah, I'll take you all together.
Okay. Very good. Next is our Manchester Township Administrative Staff, which has 15 members, uh, six principals, six vice principals, three supervisors of instruction. Mr. Dinabaji, come on up. This is the Parker Bean President, you can hop in, first in. Congratulations, there you go. Thank you. Great. And last, but certainly not least, our confidential staff unit, which has eight members, two payroll, two accounts payable, two director secretaries and two supervisor tech, uh, secretaries. And Mr. McCray, would you come up and represent the confidential staff? Thank you so much. There you go, there you go. There you go.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Security as far as, yes. I'm, I'm only thinking of social security, that's all I'm thinking. Uh, but yeah, again, obviously they do it and we, we do have police presence, but uh, Ryan and Steve Bates have been our security guards and we have class three. So again, I, I apologize, but yes, definitely, I don't have a pin for you, but I do want to recognize. Oh, there you go, very, congratulations. I do want to say one more because we never regularly recognize them, we don't have that, but uh, central online, my central office administrators, Mr. George, Mrs. Bajosa, and Mr. Locerson. Uh, they do a great job and since Mr. Locerson is slightly the oldest, I'm gonna ask you to come up and accept them on behalf of us. So have a, have a heart. That's good. Okay, um, just real quick report tonight. Give you an update on our COVID numbers. Uh, again, not nearly as, as significant as last year, but they, they are, and I do one report for each month. On September, we had 38 total cases, 29 students and nine staff members. In October, we had 45 cases, 33 students and 12 staff members. Uh, and November to date, and we also obviously missed the week in November. But right now we have 20 total cases with 14 students and six staff. Uh, so uh, it's still an issue, it's still out there, but I think we're moving in a positive direction. Uh, and I think, I mean, I, I listened to uh, Governor Murphy, who, who maybe said the statement that we might be able to uh, be rid of these masks by the end of January, which actually coincides with me on retirement, but I don't know. I don't want to retire for the mask, but my retirement, I don't care about one. So I'm hoping that because obviously this is certainly something that we're, where I don't know if we're ever getting used to it. Uh, obviously teachers teaching it and kids being trying to be the board and there's all those social skills that we need to, to improve on and things that they're missing. Not much more than, or just as much as important as education is the social skills. And that's something that I hope we get that and hopefully get that. But it's still something that we still have to be, it's out there and we still have to be on concern with that. Uh, now we do, I do, we will be having vaccinations or testing for staff beginning this Friday. So those staff that uh, are not vaccinated will be tested. Uh, that's part of the 253. Uh, and uh, it was delayed one week and we wanted to make sure everything was checked because there were some issues and most, most of the port was already issued. But uh, bottom line is we're, we're scheduled to be testing on Friday this week. Uh, the following week is just Thanksgiving, so we're not doing any of that. So it'll be the, our first, our first testing. Most Ocean County schools have been tested uh, by now, but we will probably uh, this Friday will be doing that. Uh, the district, just so you know, and I'm getting, you know, I'm getting some phone calls from parents. The district has no plans for mandating vaccinations for students or staff. We have no, no plans at this point. I know that's been, that's been shuffled out there. I know vaccinations are available for students, but I don't care if not. Uh, they're obviously, it's not something the board has discussed in any way about mandating vaccinations for students or staff. Uh, testing is mandated uh, by the state and for staff who are unvaccinated. So we do have to follow 253 and uh, you know, we'll work with that. Uh, again, the, the testing just showing that there's something put out, the testing can be an option for students, but that would only be on an optional basis. So if, if there are parents who want students tested on a, on a, like a, a regular basis or weekly or a, a monthly basis, that can be available through the state. Uh, but again, that's not something that would be mandated. Uh, and vaccinations, of course, are available for students, but there's no, uh, nothing that's mandated at all. Some schools might have had it in their, in their facility, but at this point, uh, we have not. And it looks like, uh, I think Ocean County Board of Health is doing some of those. Uh, parent conferences this weekend, they're still ongoing. We have a, the elementary's finishing up. I can say the high school, middle school and elementary, all the, the feedback that's gotten from the principals and staff, but it's not very well. Uh, in the middle school, it was, it was uh, and actually in all the schools, it was mostly virtual. Parents opted for the virtual option, except the middle school where a lot of middle school parents decided, more, more middle school parents decided to come in. And that was the option the board had decided to give the option to either one. Interesting, obviously, uh, most of the in-person came at night. The parents had some availability to do at night. Uh, but during the day, obviously, uh, most were done virtually and then we were able to get both of them done. So there were very good turnouts and most of the blocks were, were filled up. I think in NTS, they have to do a little bit extra for some teachers because all the blocks were, were finished. So that's a good sign and it's good to get an extra vacation. Say it again?
Just fifth grade.
Fifth grade, exactly, okay. Uh, we are looking at some facility changes coming up. Uh, we're looking at upgrading the facilities uh, for the press box goes. Uh, that's needed, uh, big repair. So that's something that'll, that'll be on the, the line. We gave some quotes on that. The trainer room is, is being completed as we speak and a lot of that work is being done in-house now and now that the other stuff has been done. And we finally finished the sewer lateral with the board office, so that's a review. Uh, gathering input, we are looking at and, and conversations, are looking at our media center in the high school and the middle school. Obviously, they were geared around desktop period and making those uh, you know, available for all students. But now that we're in the wireless stages and doing more Chromebooks, we can certainly do more or less uh, with the, with the desktop and that should open up the media center. So I've asked the media center people to, to give you some ideas and they'll work with the principals and administrative staff to see what would be a good layout for at least the high school and middle school to get rid of the, the desktops and just keep a little of them and open up a little bit of the town. Uh, Veterans Day ceremony, I again, really want to commend Commander Holzer and Sergeant Hinger. Uh, Sergeant Hinger was the main speaker and spoke about all the different famous people who were in the service, uh, which was very interesting. Uh, and Miss Cole, ahead of her band and do they always, I always love the, the uh, the different services where they do the, the rantings for these different services. And again, I got educated because there's one more now that we have the space, uh, baseboards. Baseboards are the last in there. One of the things that definitely impressed me, I've never seen before, is we actually had something played with bagpipes uh, as far as, as, as in the veteran man, or that's very difficult. So I wanted the kids to pick that up, so great idea. Uh, helping hands for hunger, uh, we're moving ahead and uh, how many are we looking at, Mrs. Tifo?
We were 104 baskets this week.
104 baskets. People are eyeing Mrs. Tifo at the shop right as she throws 39 turkeys in the trunk. I don't know that. It seems like what's going on there. Uh, but we've had some good donations and I think when that's 104 is very good and they'll get the full basket and so forth. I think we can start that Monday, is that correct?
Start packing on Monday.
Start packing on Monday and then you have Tuesday? Okay, very good. By Thursday, the turkey should be frosted and we should be in good shape, right?
That is the goal, so.
All right, very good. And obviously uh, Kevin's kids is going to be back again for, I forget how many years.
Or 39 annual drive.
39 annual drive and then, and again, it may be toned down a little. I know it's actually Mr. Berger called me uh, over the weekend. It doesn't look like we might be able to do the wrapping. That might be uh, something we may have to do, but I think we've got uh, the donations we're gonna hopefully pick up and we'll have, uh, we'll have a holiday for all those kids. So again, we'll be looking forward to that. Uh, and that's all mine. I'm gonna turn it over to the business administrator for his update. There's actually, they're probably not gonna do the wrapping. You just play 104. Unless it's, yes, it is. Well, you know, that's always there, but at this point, it can still change.
The wrapping is such a community event, it's just so great to see the whole community come together and do that. It's sad that they have to.
That's a special part, you're right.
Uh, just. Uh, just a couple of quick things. Uh, we are in the process of working on our application to state school waiting. Uh, this application determines where our state, our state aided for the upcoming school year, for the 2023 school year. Uh, that report is due December 3rd. Uh, preliminary numbers show we have a decrease in enrollment by about 2%, which is roughly 50 kids. Uh, we are looking at some of the other things. Our special ed population looks like it's a little, little bigger than last year. Our ESL population has increased a little bit. Uh, so we are looking at those things and we'll finalize that report for December 3rd. Um, we are also working on finalizing the uh, American Recovery Plan grant, uh, the S.R. Grant or S.R. 3. Uh, these are grants funds that are going to be used uh, in the district to support uh, learning loss, uh, COVID protocol, um, and kind of getting kids back, uh, getting kids services and trying, trying to get them back to where they were prior to this all happening. Uh, it's a fairly substantial grant. Um, we've had a lot of people involved, our curriculum department, our administrators, our, our staff in the buildings. Uh, this, this has been a very, very large effort to try to put things together that we feel uh, are gonna benefit our, our students and our staff. Uh, getting more of our family's support that they need. Um, so we are still in the process of actually paring it down a little bit. Uh, we actually got more than we, uh, we have in the grant, which is great. Um, you know, there's a lot, again, there's a lot of great ideas out there. Uh, so we're in the process of doing that because that is due next week. Um, and then last, uh, just on the agenda, there's a transportation jointure on the agenda. This is the jointure that we have between us and Lake Hurst Board of Ed. We provide their transportation for them. Uh, we transport roughly 175 of their students, um, regular ed, vocational, special education. Uh, so that's on the agenda, it's my, for, that's my report.
All right, Mr. Rais, I think this name is putting up for districts that might be interested applying for grants for uh, electric buses. Have we considered that at all?
I did, you know, I did see that. I just, I just didn't see that recently, so we're taking a look at that. Um, they are saying that it will be more cost-effective down the road. Uh, so it's definitely something we're gonna take a look at. We do have a large fleet, we have about 60 bus and power fleet. Uh, so we'll take a look at it and see if, if that's a viable option.
Okay, but that's, obviously that's direction everybody's going in. All right, are we having more member reports? Please keep it short if you have anything to share.
Um, I just want to say I got to attend the eighth grade all-star soccer game. It was nice to see two of our best female soccer players representing the school. And it's also nice to see all of the best eighth grade soccer players in Ocean County playing against each other. So it was a pretty cool experience. Boys game was going on at the same time. I did not get to see that one though. Uh, congratulations to all the middle schoolers who made their winter sports teams. And I see the schedule at the back for the high schoolers, so good luck to all those athletes right now. Um, I love the setup of the elementary conferences. I thought it went very well and organized, um, using Genesis. Had to be a relief for the teachers not to have to scramble to meet with like, you know, I have kindergarten or fifth grader, so those teachers didn't have to talk to coordinate schedules. Um, plus it gave parents more control of where all was coming for them. So I thought that was an awesome um, thing that we switched over to Genesis. And I did not get to go see all together now in person, but I did get to see clips on social media. So all the participants in the drama club did an awesome job and it was nice to see the clips on that.
Anyone else? All right, hearing none. We'll open up the floor now for public participation on the agenda items only. If you have any questions or observations or want to share something on, anything that's on the agenda, now is the appropriate time to do that.
Question for us?
Yeah, on the agenda, agenda item. Is there something on the agenda?
Is this just the open comment?
No, that would be, that would be.
That's it, yeah. This is just.
Just on the agenda.
Just on the agenda item here.
So yeah, if you have an idea, don't be open for it.
Okay. Uh, any old misses?
No misses.
Any correspondence? Correspondence. All right, we'll move on to the action portion of the meeting here. We'll do section one, A minutes, numbers one and two. Need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Staples.
Yes.
Ms. Mount.
Yes.
Mr. Webster.
Yes.
Mrs. Sermon. Ms. Wingler.
Yes.
Ms. Scardine.
Yes.
Mr. P.
Yes. C, bus evacuation drills, number one. Need a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, a couple of roll call.
Uh, Mr. Staples.
Yes.
Ms. Mount.
Yes.
Mr. Webster.
Yes.
Mrs. Sermon.
Yes.
Ms. Wingler.
Yes.
Mrs. Scardine. Mr. P.
Yes. D, bus evacuation drills, number one. Need a motion? Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Staples.
Yes.
Ms. Mount.
Yes.
Mr. Webster. Mrs. Sermon.
Yes.
Ms. Wingler.
Yes.
Mrs. Scardine.
Yes.
Mr. P.
Yes. D, joint transportation agreement, mentioned in the minutes with Lake Hurst. Uh, need a motion?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes, will there be um, like a financial exchange for this?
Yeah, so we uh, this, uh, this jointure roughly represents about $310,000. Uh, so we, we charge them for the cost of our drivers, we charge them for maintenance, fuel, uh, health benefits. You know, it, it's pro-rated, but uh, but yes, there is a, the, uh.
What's that, the formula for it?
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Staples.
Yes.
Ms. Mount.
Yes.
Mr. Webster.
Yes.
Mrs. Sermon.
Yes.
Ms. Wingler.
Yes.
Mrs. Scardine.
Yes.
Mr. P.
Yes. Section two, A administrative, number one through six. May I have a motion, please?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, actually two. Uh, number two, uh, it's a big one, I just tell us a little bit more about the motions rise program.
Yeah, this is, this is a program. Uh, we, we have transition programs for our 18 to 21-year-olds that we take out and replace in all kinds of agencies. This is primarily for students who plan to go to college or in special education programs. So DDR selects in four districts, okay, in the two county area, we happen to be one of them. And uh, they come into our school district to provide services for special ed children who plan on going to college.
Thank you. Also had a question on number six. Uh, I think it's awesome that we can see that the cheerleaders are hoping to go to Florida again, get back to some normal. Um, will parents be required to travel with the students?
Yeah, each parent, each, each cheerleader would have one parent involved. Now, there's a couple of things here. Uh, they need to get this, uh, if this is approved, they would then be able to move into the qualifying, be able to qualify. But again, they're fully realized that it's subject to any cancellation, any travel restrictions and that will, all that would, would fall on them. So they will again, have another meeting with the parents to talk about all the, all the uh, requirements that the, it's in Disney World, so there's certain things to do. Obviously, if there's a, a positive, they're gonna have to be set aside, uh, those students and the parents will be involved with that. So they would be responsible for that. So there, the, right now, every parent has agreed to it, it's fine. Uh, but again, it, it develops, hopefully it gets better and we're fine. But again, it, it develops, hopefully it gets better and we're fine. But they'll need to get this in order to qualify, they have to go to a qualifying event. They think, I think we would qualify, but in order for them to, to qualify, they have to obviously have this ported license to it.
And the parents understand and thought that the worst case scenario, child is test positive, they get there and the competition.
They're all fully aware of that. And there's no, it's not like certain, and I had mentioned that we should really look at 100% certification and they do it.
Good luck for that.
Yeah.
Do you have plans for them coming back on the bus or is that possible?
Well, yeah, they would have, they would have to stay there. They would have to, there's, there's all the requirements, they have to test and so forth, so yes.
All right, any other discussion? May I roll call please?
Mr. Staples.
Yes.
Ms. Mount.
Yes.
Mr. Webster.
Yes.
Mrs. Serenak.
Yes.
Ms. Winkler.
Yes.
Ms. Biscardi.
Yes.
Mr. P.
Yes. B personnel, number one through 28, need a motion?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, a couple roll call.
Mr. Staples.
Yes.
Ms. Mount.
Yes.
Mr. Webster. Number 28, guess what's on the other? Mrs. Serenak.
Yes.
Ms. P, I'm sorry, Ms. Winkler.
Yes.
Ms. Biscardi.
Yes.
Mr. P.
Yes.
If I could just, I'm sorry, if I could just interject here. Number three, Go On Wells has been a bus aid for us and she's been with us for 18 years, so congratulations on her. Very good.
All right, we have a C, suited personnel, number one, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Discussion? I don't think I've ever seen so many in the same line. What happened?
It's a ride.
That's an awful lot of people on. I mean, I know we have a choice on it, but it's still, yeah. I, I know it's still.
Wait, I have a question. Is the virtual instruction being, is the instruction, the home instruction being provided to these kids? Is it virtual or are the teachers expected to go to the homes?
No.
Or just, okay.
All right, any other discussion? All right, roll call please.
Mr. Staples.
Yes.
Ms. Mount.
Yes.
Mr. Webster.
Yes.
Mrs. Serenak.
Yes.
Ms. Winkler.
Yes.
Ms. Biscardi.
Yes.
Mr. P.
Yes. D special services, number one, need a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please, I'm sorry.
These people will be available at, at second call, guessing maybe ABA's?
Yeah, what, what happened is that we have one child who receives in-home ABA services. He needs a functional behavioral assessment, so we're asking that person to come in and do it for the school. Therefore, we have to have them approved by the board.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? A roll call please.
Mr. Staples.
Yes.
Ms. Mount.
Yes.
Mr. Webster.
Yes.
Mrs. Serenak.
Yes.
Ms. Winkler.
Yes.
Ms. Biscardi.
Yes.
Mr. P.
Yes. A athletics, number one and two, need a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? As we always do, we like to all our sports from the middle school and the high school going in from one and two. All right, may I have a roll call please?
Mr. Staples.
Yes.
Ms. Mount.
Yes.
Mr. Webster.
Yes.
Mrs. Serenak.
Yes.
Ms. Winkler.
Yes.
Ms. Biscardi.
Yes.
Mr. P.
Yes. Section three, A finance, number one through five, may I have a motion, please?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Staples.
Yes.
Ms. Mount.
Yes.
Mr. Webster.
Yes.
Mrs. Serenak.
Yes.
Ms. Winkler.
Yes.
Ms. Biscardi.
Yes.
Mr. P.
Yes. All right, public participation on the agenda now. Now would be the time. You come up to the podium, you have to introduce yourself and tell us who you are. Go from there. Yeah, turn, turn it back on.
There's a lot of walking on there.
There you go. Yep, yep, we got it.
Good evening, it's me again. My name is Candace Boyan and I'm a taxpaying citizen at Four Shore and Way. The last time I spoke, I was advocating for my children and now it's time for me to advocate for myself. I'm also advocating tonight for my colleagues that are in the same situation that I am in. I would like to start off by letting Mr. Trethaway, the board members and administration know that I'm not standing before you tonight to be some sort of troublemaker or problem child. I'm standing here because I truly love my job. I adore the children, but most importantly, I'm very passionate about protecting my constitutional rights as an American foreign citizen. I'm hopeful that you will all respect me for this. That being said, tonight I would like to ask the board for clarification on why it's considered in support of nation if I don't comply with your testing hours of Friday night, Saturday or Sunday. With all due respect, I'm a human, not an item, and I'm a contracted employee from 8:10 to 3:10, 182 days a year, mandated or not. If you are requiring me to do something for work, it has to be fit in during the hours that match my contract. Some would say, Candace, just get the tests when you are told. Respectfully, I have to say no. If I comply with this, what is next? What else would you make me do? What other unconstitutional mandate will be forced upon me? I've sat at home and burned through over 46 days being forced to quarantine. Why? Because you told me so. I cover my face each and every day with a mask, being forced to breathe in carbon dioxide when I'm allowed to breathe, I breathe oxygen and shop right Walmart, Lowe's, Home Depot, Home Goods. I'm sure you get the picture. Why? Because you told me so. I answer health screenings every morning to tell you personal information about myself when medical surveilling is illegal and a violation of the Constitution. Why? Because you told me so. Now it's my opportunity to tell you I've had enough. I'm tired of feeling like a second-class citizen because of a medical decision I chose for myself, especially when my decision does not bear any harm or disadvantage to my job description. I'm tired of being systematically discriminated against each day and every day, whether it be direct or indirect. Let me remind the board that employees that wanted the COVID-19 experimental drug were able to leave work during work hours to receive it. The state of New Jersey is in a medical tyranny bubble and I'm tired of it. I am not a hazard to my coworkers or to the children. I can stand here tonight and confidently say I most likely have more antibodies than any vaccinated person in this room. I am not a threat nor a terrorist and I should not feel like one. In closing, I want to end by saying, my father is a 100% disabled veteran. He was a United States Marine. He was shot and almost killed in Vietnam. My father did not risk his life fighting to prevent the spread of communism. For me to have to stand here tonight in the year 2021 in America to plead for medical freedom, what is happening in our country is a disgrace, a sin and quite frankly criminal. Please stop saying this is an executive order. Please stop saying your hands are tied. Stand up to these dictators and say enough with me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your input. Does anyone else have any addresses?
Thank you, Candace. Candace, the only thing I would, would just correct is that the vaccination, the staff did that afterward. It started at NTS, so everybody, that school had to be emptied. So after 3:30 was when most people got vaccinated. I think it was from four to six. So with the vaccination, the student, the staff had to get their vaccination happen.
Other than that, you know, I have no problems.
Okay, thank you for sharing.
My name is Heather Hicks. I teach at Ridgeway Elementary School and I'm here for two reasons tonight. The first is to present a request regarding the COVID testing procedures for staff who do not meet the state definition for fully vaccinated for COVID-19. The second is to help you understand the constitutional nature of the mandates that Murphy put into place and that you are enforcing. The November 10th guidance for schools on COVID-19 testing and reporting requirements states that home tests, self-tests are authorized for self-collection and self-screening. I print it out a copy, I can give it to you needed. It's a living document that they have just updated on November 10th and it is the current document. Southern Regional is allowing staff to home test and upload an image of the results to an in-house document. I'm asking that that courtesy is given to our staff as well due to the privacy and data issues surrounding the Longview Broad Institute testing. Not only does Longview have a terrible reputation, reputation for losing test results and mixing up data at other school districts that have already been testing for quite some time, but the public nature of the test procedures that we have heard so far are extremely concerning. So I'm asking you, do you trust your staff? Do you trust us to watch over the children? Do you trust us to drive buses? Do you trust us for many things? Do you trust us to self-test at home and give you the results? Because allowing home testing and self-testing will go a long way to alleviate some of the psychological and emotional pressure that we are facing. What's the big deal, you might be asking? The big deal is that the mandate is punitive in nature. The wording, "that staff must be subjected to testing," and this is a quote from the mandate, "until they are fully vaccinated," explains the purpose.